Trish L. Gleason, Assistant City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 1st, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for May 1st, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the session of the agenda where the public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: in-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to; remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appears on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate session. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by the name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for tonight's meeting is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Burma.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Trish. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the swearing-in of Councilmember Katie Wethel as Mayor Pro Tem.
I, Katie Wethel, do solemnly swear.
I, Katie Wethel, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem as now or hereafter required by law.
Discharge all the duties of the Office of Mayor Pro Tem as now or hereafter required by law.
Before we move on, I just want to say a thank you to Councilmember Rousell. I'll miss you over here, by the way, but it's been, I really appreciate you taking the time that you did to serve as Mayor Pro Tem. You did a lot of filling in in the last few months, so thank you very much for everything that you did and continue to do as a council member. So, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Wethel, I'm looking forward to working with you and having you a little closer as we have these discussions every night, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Trish.
Okay, next on the agenda are presentations. Our first presentation is the Iowa Urban Tree Council Outstanding Civic Leader Award to Laura Rousell.
All right, and it looks like we have Steve Preglar here, from Steve Faisal, to work with us tonight.
Good evening. My name's Steve Preglar, and I reside at 2070 Garfield Avenue here in Dubuque, and I'm on the Board of Directors of Dubuque Trees Forever. And I'm here this evening along with our Park Division Manager, Steve Faisal, to present Laura Rousell with a Civic Volunteer Award. Each year in February, the Iowa Urban Tree Council recognizes individuals, groups, and organizations for their work in urban forestry. Of the seven award categories, I nominated Laura Rousell for Outstanding Civic Volunteer. She received the award at the annual Urban and Community Forestry Awards Luncheon, April 12th. It is with great pride and pleasure that I'm able to present Laura with this award. The media press release reads, "Dubuque's Laura Rousell Honored by the Urban Tree Council." Laura Rousell, from Dubuque, was named Outstanding Civic Volunteer Leader by the Iowa Urban Tree Council during the 32nd Annual Urban Forestry Awards Ceremony on April 12th at the FFA Enrichment Center in Ankeny, Iowa. Rousell was elected to the Dubuque City Council in 2019, representing the city's second ward. She revived and became President of Dubuque Trees Forever and represents all of Dubuque when it comes to trees. Rousell has a genuine passion for trees and involving volunteers and volunteer groups to participate in all of their tree planting and tree care activities. Since the 2017 Trees for Dubuque kickoff, the group has planted hundreds of trees throughout the city. Plantings have included street and park tree replacements, neighborhood plantings on private property, plantings in partnership with Dubuque Sustainability, and the Tree Voucher Program. Laura is an outstanding example of an Iowa urban forestry leader by enhancing our forest resources, Sedema Hannigan, Urban Forestry Coordinator with the Department of Natural Resources. Her dedication will benefit Dubuque for future generations. And another great example of Laura's leadership is in the organizing and organization of all of the different activities in association with our Arbor Day tree planting ceremony, which occurred Saturday morning just across the street here in Washington Park. And I'd also like to thank Mayor Kavanaugh for his participation in joining us and reading our Arbor Day tree proclamation. So, Laura, this award is very well deserved. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and I just, I need to say, you know, she's going to be very humble about this, and we all know that well, but I have never met anybody more involved and more hardworking than Councilmember Laura Rousell. I just, I haven't met that person yet. We're all trying to get as hardworking and as involved as her, but thank you, Laura, for everything you're doing, and very well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trish.
Our next presentation is a flood control update. The Public Works Department will share a video.
I'm John Klosterman, Public Works Director, and I'm happy to be here with you tonight to provide you an update on our flood control activities. Also with me, you'll hear from Assistant City Engineer Bob Schizzle, and here to answer any questions, our Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware, and Emergency Management Director Tom Berger. Let's start off with a recap on where we are tonight. The river has crested, crested at 24.3 feet on Saturday, which is a great thing. It's the third highest river crest that we've had, and the second one since we've had the flood control system. The current river stage is 23.7 feet and expected to fall below major flood stage, which is 21.5 feet, by Saturday, May 5th. Our flood control activity, even though it has a lot of interest at this time, actually started back in early April. April 6th is when we started closing our first gates, and then Public Works staff continued to set up, close gates, set up pumps, and worked the system. We closed all the gates this year. That's the first time, or the third time since the system was completed in 1973. Now, our action steps are based on prediction, and not all those gates actually got wet by the river this year, but it was just based on our plan, that was the action that we took. So, right now, if we could play a video, that was created by our very talented media team, you'll be able to see some of the results of our efforts.
Right now, we're experiencing major flooding. The way it's going, it looks to be our third-largest raise in the river. We have a flood wall in the city of Dubuque that covers its roughly 5.6 miles. In prepping, we have the whole flood wall closed up, and slough gates and everything closed. We are running pump stations at different locations along the flood wall, and it's just not, you close a gate and everything runs. We got to monitor it early in the flood. We'll have a crew out twice a day checking, and then, once we hit 21 feet, we inspect the flood wall 24/7. We prepared all year long for these events. People don't really notice us. They see us out in the streets. A lot of them understand why we got them streets blocked off, just like with the flood here. We're blocking streets off now, and you learn from past events, this road would have been flooded. So, what we're doing, we're building the road up to 26-foot. That way, we can keep the road open to the ice arena and the ball fields, and make sure we can keep access to them facilities. The city is here to provide a service and protect our community if it's flowing snow during this flood event. You know, we're here, ready to tackle it. It's all about keeping everybody safe. As we move forward with this flood event, 2023, the community can help us out by just staying safe, staying away from the rivers. If they see roads closed, do not go around the signs, please. They are there for a reason, and we're just going to keep progressing through this event and see what every day brings us.
So, that was a quick update on the last month's activities. Saturday, the mayor, the city manager, along with Public Works flood control team members, met with Colonel Curry of the Rock Island District, along with his team, and we spent a couple hours out on the levee itself and on the flood wall, building relationship with them, and one that we have a good one on, and we want to make sure that continues as we share knowledges and things that we learned about this flood event that we can carry on to a future one. So, what's next? We continue 24/7 inspections, and pump operations will continue. We'll continue to communicate with the Corps of Engineers, they were in today, and we had people out, field staff, out with them. Once the water starts to go down, we'll have to look at what debris maybe has, you know, be left on the shoreline that we have to clean up and remove. We'll also create a gate opening plan and a plan that, where we basically work backwards through our system and open things back up and remove the pumps. We've incorporated some new technology. Assistant Director Ariel Swift was able to develop GIS tool that we use to track everything our field people are doing. That'll give us a great look at where our defects are, our concerns are, as the water comes back down. So, finally, once the river falls below 10-foot, we'll do a complete inspection of the riverside flood control system to see if there's any damage, or identify any damage or any repairs that will be needed. At this time, I'd like to have Bob come up, and he'll talk about some other new technology that was developed by the Engineering Department.
Bob Schizzle, Assistant City Engineer. A number of years ago, the mayor and City Council approved the purchase of drones for several city departments. That's good. And that would include police, fire, Public Information, and the Engineering Department. I would like to share with you how the use of drones and the powerful modeling technology available has helped us in this ongoing flood fighting efforts. You just saw an amazing video prepared by Public Information Staff through the use of drone technology. As the flood event was evolving, on Friday, April 21st, the Engineering Department used our drone to fly the entire Schmidt Island, capturing both aerial imagery and ground surface modeling elevations. On Monday, April 24th, with the National Weather Service forecast projected a river crest of 24.9 feet, with this information obtained from the drone model, staff developed a flood-water inundation scenario maps in real time for the Schmidt Island. Now, I'd like to kind of walk you through what those inundation maps look like that we developed. So, again, this is Schmidt Island, and the blue on the screen is actually the flooding, the Mississippi River at river stage 23. Here's another one at river stage 25. Here's one at river stage 24, and then you can see some of the roads, and I'll zoom in here, but you can see here at river stage 24, we were able to kind of model and predict when Admoshihi Drive, right next to the ice arena, would start to see water. And then we ran through the scenario at river stage 24 and 1/2, and again, you can see, you know, Admoshihi Drive was sustaining more water. And we ran through river stages 25, and at river stages 25, you could see that both Admoshihi Drive and Greyhound Park Road over near Miller Riverview Park was starting And we went through river stages 25 and 1/2, and then also 26. So, with this information, the city emergency management team used these informational inundation maps for the various river stages that I just went through as a valuable tool and resource for decision-making and implementing our flood response action plan for Schmidt Island. With those maps, we also shared that, those inundation maps, with the businesses on the island, and also the various public utilities that could potentially be impacted. And so, that communication and that collaboration was very important, and all the utilities really appreciated that information that we could share with them. I would also like to note that as part of our flood protection plan, we do have a plan in place and ready to implement. Thank goodness we didn't have to implement it this year, or for this flood event, but it's a temporary flood protection plan for the ice arena. With that, I'll open it up for questions. I guess I would like to have a shout-out to some of our staff that put this together. It wasn't me, it was our talented staff that did it. I'd like to acknowledge Troy Kress, and Jeff Brandt, and Nathan Stephan. They worked on all this stuff and really, really helped us all, so. But we have the whole team here, if any questions for...
All right. Well, thank you, Bob, and thank you, John, for the presentation, and everybody for the video and all the tools you were able to put together there. Do we have any questions or discussion this evening about this?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. I always wonder when I read about what's going on during the flood. You say the pumps are, everything, the system is working as designed, which is a very comforting statement, so I'm glad, I'm always happy to read that. But what do the pumps do? You keep those pumps going, and do we have backups for those, just in case? Could you talk about the pumps a little bit?
Sure. We have four pumping stations, permanent pumping station, Hawthorne Street, B Branch, that we're all well aware of, Ice Harbor, and then Moss Park. And those are the major pumping stations, so when the gates are closed, we redirect storm water that we would have if we had a rain event to those retention areas, and at that time, that water is pumped out. Now, we have a temporary pumping station set up at 4th Street, down by the shot tower, and that pumps directly out of the storm sewer. But same scenario, once the gates are closed, that water can no longer freely flow out into the river, so then it has to be pumped. And then there's several other smaller ones where we either put in a plug, or we close a small gate, that's going to require a pump also. Now, as far as backups for our temporary pumps, we have backups for those. There is no backup for any of our permanent pumping stations. The pumping, the pumps that are in there are redundant, though, so instead of two, there may be three the other way around. We have different scenarios that we planned out where we could add a pump here or there if we would fail on one of those, but basically, the stations are designed to run with less pumping capacity than what they're built at.
Thank you. And how did this affect the B Branch system?
B Branch has performed as designed, and which is very comforting to say that. So, there is, I mean, the system, as we talked about, is aged, there's stress on it. We'll have to reevaluate if there's anything that we have to do to it. The gates are tweaked a little bit from the 15-inch rain that we had. So, some of the things that we kind of delayed because we thought we'd move forward with replacement, we probably have to take a harder look at and redo that, but the station itself has functioned great.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John, you and I had the opportunity to talk to one of the reporters who was asking about this this weekend, and he asked a really interesting question, and he said, if anybody, if somebody wasn't watching the news, would they even know that there's a flood going on in the Mississippi? And I looked around, and I thought, you know, they probably wouldn't. And that really is a testament to the investment that we've made over decades, generations before us, but then the current investment that we continue to make into this, because this is the reason why we do that. Right here is the reason, when we have the third-highest flood in our history, and we barely notice, unless you're working on the flood wall on a daily basis, right? That's really important when we think about that, because it's easy to lose sight of things that you don't necessarily notice when we talk about why we're investing in something. And one of the things we talk about pretty frequently when we visit with our Army Corps of Engineers partners, are some of the vulnerabilities that we still have along the flood wall, things that we need to shore up just a little bit more than what we have right now. Those things are all holding, but it's really important that we continue that investment and continue to do those things. So, I think it's, you know, you mentioned the pumps that are at the end of the B Branch project, the ones we've had to delay. It's really important that we move forward with that because of things like this. If it had rained 15 inches while it was also flooded at 23 or 24 feet, we're talking about very challenging conditions for the technology that sits there, and we have to keep moving forward with that stuff. So, I appreciate the fact that you've given this presentation, and the fact that we have video documentation of what this looked like. This is a historic moment for Dubuque, and I don't know if we know that, because we didn't notice it. We were all very dry, and it was very good, but it was very historic. I mean, this was a really big flood. It caused a ton of damage up and down the Mississippi River, and I'm happy that we've made that investment, looking forward to helping our neighbors to figure out how to make the improvements they need to make, too, but thank you very much for all the work that you've continued to do, and you will continue to do until the river behaves itself once again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Trish.
Next on the agenda are the consent items.
Actually, proclamations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm so sorry. Proclamation. Our first proclamation is Mental Health Month, May 2023.
Okay, and this is on behalf of Mental Health America, and I believe we have some representatives. Come on up, yeah. Feel free to say anything you like before I read the proclamation.
And there's a button right on your right hand to move that down, if you don't want to move the whole podium down. There you go. Yes, I am sure. I appreciate that.
So, we can see each other's face while we have a conversation. It helps, yes.
Well, in general, we first just want to thank both you and the rest of the council. We really appreciate this. My name is Brenna Bergard. I am the Vice President of Mental Health America, Board of Dubuque County, and with me have several of our other members, if you guys would like to introduce yourselves.
Diane Heiken.
And Sue Witty.
Yeah, we want to thank you for your continued support of our efforts to raise awareness of mental wellness in our community and the importance of brain health in all of the associated areas. MHA is a very longstanding organization. It's been around since 1909 nationally, and Dubuque adopted their branch in 1957, so that's pretty cool. We've been around for a while. Some of the things that we do is we distribute a monthly newsletter. We do posts on Facebook. We offer professional speakers, such as the one we have coming up, June 14th. We offer mental health toolkits for people to use and hopefully kind of work through some of their things. And then, lastly, and one of our most important things that we do, is we offer scholarships to students in need that have mental health struggles. So, some of the things we have coming up this month that we would love to invite you to is, first and foremost, our Mental Health Dinner, which is happening May 10th, or next Wednesday. Tickets can be bought online for $15. There's also going to be a silent auction available as well. Then, June 14th, we have a discussion, we have, sorry, we have a documentary and panel discussion with Emma Benoit. She is a suicide attempt survivor, and she loves to share her story, and so, we've invited her to come. She'll be speaking at Clark University in the Jansen Music Hall. It is free and open to the public. We just ask for freewill donation, and then additionally, there's going to be all the community resources we can possibly get to join us with that as well. So, we've got a lot of cool things coming up, and if anybody ever needs resources, they can either speak to a member or visit us at mhadubuque.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenna, Diane, and Sue, thank you so much for being here to accept this proclamation and inviting us to the events and the entire community to the events, of course, all the work you continue to do. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas for over 60 years, Mental Health America has brought together mental health providers, consumers, family members, advocates, and concerned residents to serve as an effective voice for mental health in this area, and whereas the area people live in plays a significant role in their overall health and well-being, and whereas surroundings can impact if, how, and when a person's needs are met, which in turn affects mental health, and whereas having safe, stable, and healthy home conditions set the foundation for achieving and maintaining good mental health, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with early and effective interventions and treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and resident shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. Now, therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Month in the city of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the Dubuque area to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our residents can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you. Next proclamation is Community Action Month, May 2023.
Thank you so much for the invitation to come today. My name is Whitney Sanger.
Thank you so much for the invitation to come today. My name is Whitney Sanger, and as of today, I am the Dubuque County Outreach Director for the Hawkeye Area Community Action Program. 2023 marks the 59th year since the Community Action Network was established to help American families and communities overcome obstacles of poverty. Over 16 community action agencies in Iowa and 1,000 agencies across the country are working daily to create opportunities and transform the lives of our neighbors, making communities stronger and helping families across the U.S. thrive. This year, HACAP, a proud member of Community Action Network, will also commemorate 58 years of helping families throughout Benton, Dubuque, Delaware, Iowa, Jackson, Jones, Lynn, and Washington. Each May during Community Action Month, we reflect on HACAP and our network's impact on families and our community. Last year alone, our organization served over 75,000 individuals and over 15 million nationwide through community action agencies. These are through immediately needed services such as shelter and food, heat and other utilities, childcare, and long-term solutions like education and placement. Community action agencies serve 99% of the population across America with life-changing services to help families really achieve that financial stability. This month, we encourage you to join us in celebrating Community Action Month and the impact we make throughout HACAP, throughout Dubuque County. Thank you so much again for welcoming me today, and I'm excited to share my organization with you all.
Whitney, thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation and all the great work that HACAP does. So thank you. City Dubuque proclamation. Whereas Community Action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas Community Action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas Community Action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas Community Action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas Community Action delivers innovative services and supports that create greater opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas Community Action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas Community Action is celebrating 59 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Community Action Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa.
Congrats on the new gig.
All right, Trish.
Our next proclamation is Preservation Month, May 2023.
All right. We have some planning services folks here with us and the Historic Preservation Commission. And go ahead. You can feel free to move that down if you want. So you can see everybody if you want. No, the the desk itself, like the whole thing.
How do you do that?
Corey's so much better at explaining this than I am.
Is it going down? Ah, there it is.
Yeah.
Sorry for my height.
No, no.
I wore flats. I'm Melissa Daken Castle. I'm Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I live at 1941 Coates Street. And it's National Preservation Month, and this year it's all about people saving places. So from the staff and commissioners who serve to the building owners and developers of historic properties, to the people that use historic buildings and the children, including the children who we want to keep in this community long term. Historic places are useless without the people to care for, use, appreciate, and learn from them. And it takes all sorts of people to save places. You will hear more about our tomorrow night 21st Annual Ken Kringle Awards from Vice Chairperson Tia Dement a little later tonight. So we want to thank you for your support of historic preservation in our commission. We're taking on a number of exciting projects right now. I'll tell you about the Black Heritage Survey, which is currently underway. This is the first of its kind in the entire state of Iowa. We're discovering a lot about Dubuque's recent history, but also surprisingly, information about some of our earliest settlers who are people of color. And we're about to undertake two intensive architectural and historic surveys of 20th century neighborhoods, which is a first for Dubuque. One is Volker Heights, which is near the Mount Pleasant Home, and that's punctuated by bungalows and a signature Volker concrete block house. And then we're also looking at Deerville, which is the modern neighborhood between Asbury and Hillcrest, red brick, modest homes that were built for the workers for the, at that time, new John Deere Plan. So once again, we want to thank you for your support of preservation. It's part of what makes Dubuque a unique, attractive, and vibrant community.
Thank you very much, Melissa and Tia, for being here tonight to accept this proclamation and for all the work that you do tirelessly to make sure that historic preservation stays top of mind for all of us. City Dubuque proclamation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for telling a more complete story of our community, managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, creating sustainable communities, fostering local pride, and enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for residents of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas the city honors preservation efforts annually through the Ken Kringle Historic Preservation Awards in partnership with the Dubuque County Historic Preservation Commission and Dubuque Main Street, taking place on May 2 this year. And whereas Preservation Month, celebrating the theme People Saving Places, and sponsored by the City of Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, is an opportunity for the community to celebrate the people who are preserving our history and architecture that is significant to our community's past and future. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Preservation Month in the City of Dubuque, calling upon our residents to join fellow residents across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. All right, Trish.
The next proclamation is Jewish American Heritage Month, May 2023.
All right.
So this is perfect for my size.
[laughing]
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council, City Manager Van Milligan, City Staff, and Dubuque Residents. On behalf of the members of Temple Beth El, we are honored to receive this proclamation, acknowledging May as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Dubuque. I am also honored to share a brief reflection of our historical community engagement. It is a story of smart and generous families whose commitment, their mitzvah, has yielded a rich heritage and inclusive culture, celebrated across many decades of social and economic contributions to the Dubuque community. Let's begin with the donation of Linwood Cemetery, formerly the Alexander Levi Cemetery Association, to our city by Alexander Levi and his family, with the understanding that the Jewish section retain its privileged location in perpetuity. A stroll throughout provides a narrative about the important legacy of Dubuque's Jewish community. Let's take another stroll through Dubuque's downtown and north end corridors, where one will find decades-long memories of proud Jewish merchants whose benchmark, desiring to serve the community at large, define their success and that of our city districts. Among them, Diamond's Cafe, the clothing stores, The Hub, Stevens and Zuckey's, Solomon's Butcher, Rotman Auto, Inland Molasses, Blum and Solomon Recycling, Farber Bag. Among this list, Farber Bag recently celebrated its 115th year of operation, and the Blum site is being repurposed as community space. We are mindful and very proud of this heritage. Today, the Jewish community continues to build on this historic fabric and mitzvah. We are small business owners and entrepreneurs, educators, professionals in the performing arts and medical field, literary consultants, civic leaders, and public servants. Once again, Temple Beth El's entire membership is appreciative of this occasion that honors Jewish American heritage and thanks you for this proclamation.
Councilwoman Farber, thank you so much for being here to accept this proclamation and on behalf of everyone who attends Temple Beth El. And thank you for filling us in on some key pieces of history that I'm sure were pretty informative for all of us. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas for nearly 34 years, every Congress has authorized, and each President of the United States has declared, a period each year for the celebration of the Jewish culture, history, and contributions to the United States. Beginning in 2006, Congress passed a bipartisan resolution calling on state and local governments and the people of the United States to observe a full month in which American Jewish history is celebrated. And whereas Temple Beth El, established in 1875, and its members of the Jewish faith, endorsed the tradition of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in Dubuque. And whereas there has been an active, though quiet, Jewish presence almost since Dubuque's founding. Look no further than Linwood Cemetery, former Main Street merchants, educators, professionals in the arts and medicine, and small business owners and entrepreneurs. To see the Jewish tradition is to give to their communities. And whereas, local recognition of Jewish American Heritage Month matters now more than ever. Anti-Semitism has been rising at an alarming rate in our country, and many of our cities have experienced an increase in anti-Semitic incidents. The resurgence of this ancient hatred is a threat not only to Jewish people, but to all of us. And whereas, by bringing Jewish American Heritage Month to Dubuque, we offer hope and optimism through the celebration of the vibrant heritage of the Jewish Americans who have enriched our lives. And whereas, we stand against all forms of hate and bigotry, and are united in our commitment to dignity, compassion, and justice for all residents of Dubuque. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge residents to celebrate and honor this occasion. Okay, Trish.
Our next proclamation is Public Service Recognition Week, May 7 through the 13, 2023.
All right. And this is on behalf of the City of Dubuque Employee Recognition Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and City Council. I'm Connie Mueller with the Health Services Department. This is Jenny Messeridge with the Legal Services Department and Felicia Carner with the Media Services Department. We are members of the Employee Recognition Committee for the City of Dubuque. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize our dedicated public servants from federal, state, and local governments across the country. We are proud to have coworkers who always put their job and responsibilities first. Thank you for your hard work and dedication and commitment to the citizens of Dubuque.
And thank you for being here to accept this proclamation, but of course, for all the work that you do. On top of the work that you do as a public servant to then be on the committee to help other public servants. So thank you so much for for doing this.
Thank you.
City of Dubuque proclamation. Whereas Americans, including the nearly 60,000 residents of Dubuque, are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our community and nation working. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but oaths to serve their communities. And whereas, many public servants, including police officers, healthcare professionals, code enforcement officials, and others, risk their lives each day in service to their communities. And whereas, day in and day out, all city staff provide diverse services to create a more viable, livable, equitable, and resilient community. And whereas, public service employees in Dubuque are composed of many individuals respected for their ability, professionalism, and commitment to doing the best job, excuse me, best job possible. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through the 13, 2023, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Dubuque, Iowa. All right. Last, but definitely not least, Trish.
Last proclamation is Great Give Day, May 17, 2023.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Peter Supel with the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque. On behalf of the Community Foundation and our local nonprofits, we appreciate the support of Great Give Day. Great Give Day is a 24-hour, online-only giving platform. Since 2014, we have raised over $2.7 million for our nonprofits. This year, we'll have a record number of nonprofits participating, roughly 200 of them. Also this year, we're excited. We're having a celebration in Washington Park on the 17th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We're inviting all the nonprofits to set up a booth to kind of celebrate who they are and what they do. Food trucks, music will be included as well. So the public is encouraged to come down and hopefully say a no rain prayer for us.
That's part of the proclamation, actually. So
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Peter, for being here to accept this. And of course, for all the work that the Community Foundation does for all the nonprofits. That's great news that we have that many signed up this year.
Yep.
That's very exciting. City Dubuque proclamation. Whereas Great Give Day is an online giving event that empowers people to come together and raise critical funds for the nonprofits who make Dubuque, the Dubuque region, strong. And whereas, the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque's annual Great Give Day will take place on May 17, 2023. Since its inception in 2014, Great Give Day has raised more than $2.7 million to support the local community, benefiting hundreds of local nonprofit agencies. And whereas, hosting Great Give Day is one of the many ways the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque strengthens communities and inspires giving. For 20 years, the Community Foundation has worked with individuals, families, nonprofits, and businesses to strengthen the community through a variety of charitable funds and strategic initiatives. And whereas, on May 17, 2023, donations can be made from midnight to 11:59 p.m. to 200 local funds in the seven county region around Dubuque listed on greatgiveday.org. I would like to thank the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque for powering this incredible day. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 17th of May, 2023, as Great Give Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and encourage all Dubuque residents to take part in this special event by giving to our local nonprofits on Great Give Day. All right, Trish.
Now we'll have our consent agenda items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like to remove from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. Consent items can be found on pages two through four of tonight's agenda.
All right. Do we have anyone in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion, please? Feel free to adjust whatever you need, Felicia. That's fine. Okay, seeing no one here. Do we have anyone virtually?
No virtual comments.
Okay. And any emails?
No emails.
Okay. Back to the table, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next items are, next items are to, are the public hearings. We will move, I'm sorry, pardon me. We will move on the items to be set for public hearing. We have eight agenda items to be set for public hearing. Number one is municipal service center, electric vehicle, EV charging stations. Number one is municipal service center electric vehicle, EV, charging stations project for May 15th, 2023. Two is 2023 pavement marking projects for May 15th, 2023. Three is set public hearing for sale of city-owned lot at 590 Clark Drive for May 15th, 2023. Four, fiscal year 2023 second budget amendment for May 15th, 2023. Five, amended and restated urban renewal plan for greater downtown urban renewal area version 2023.3 for June 5th, 2023. Six, amended and restated urban renewal plan for Dubuque Industrial Center Urban Renewal Area version 2023.3 for June 5th, 2023. Seven, Juul Public Hearing, Iowa Department of Transportation Consolidated Funding Application for June 5th, 2023. Eight, Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year 2023 Annual Action Plan Amendment Number Two, Public Hearing for June 5th, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Farber. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to the boards and commissions. We have application review for Equity and Human Rights Commission and the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Trish. So we have, for the Equity and Human Rights Commission, first, we have one three-year term through January 1st, 2024. We have, one, two, three, four, five, six applicants. Thank you very much, that's wonderful. And I'm just going to go through each one and see if anyone has any public comment on any one of these applicants. So the first is Pamela Birch. Do we have anyone to speak to this application? And I'll just look for nods virtually, okay? None, all right. We have Michaela Freiberger. Is anyone present to speak to this one? Okay. And we have Kristin Leffler. Candace Raymond. Let me see if anyone's here to speak to that, okay. Teresa Sampson Brown. All right. And then Nina Strauslin. All right. I'll just call to council members' attention that we do receive emails from time to time. I believe we've received a few from applicants for this commission. So we encourage applicants to reach out to us and just introduce yourselves so we can have a little more information to work with as we make these choices. The second commission is Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, one three-year term through July 1st, 2025, and one applicant, Cliff Conrad. Do we have anyone present to speak to this application? And anyone virtually? Okay, then we will move on to public hearings, please, Trish.
Next on the agenda are public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for a public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question and state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Resolution of Approval for the Proposed Amended and Restated Urban Renewal Plan for the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District version 2023.3.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Russell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt a resolution approving the amended and restated urban renewal plan version 2023.2 for the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District. The proposed amended and restated urban renewal plan would add a project to the public purposes activities, specifically five flag center building improvements. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution approving the amended and restated urban renewal plan version 2023.2 for the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District. Do we have anyone present to address the council on this item? Seeing no one here, do we have any virtual? Okay. All right, no virtual input. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none, I see that we've all done our reading. So we have a motion by Jones, second by Russell to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Public hearing number two is Resolution Approving the Proposed First Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Seiple Warehouse LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligation pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Seiple Warehouse LLC, the developer, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Developer now intends to increase the size of the warehouse to be constructed to a facility of approximately 250,000 square feet at a cost of $24.5 million. The expansion to the facility footprint will extend the structure over portions of additional property adjacent to the property previously sold to the developer. The additional property being acquired by developer is specifically a portion of the Brem property and a portion of the Wilming property. The Brem property being acquired by developer does not currently reside within the city limits. Key modifications to the development agreement outlined in the First Amendment include the following. Number one, the developer must construct a warehouse facility of approximately 250,000 square feet at an estimated cost of $24.5 million. Number two, city agrees to annex the Brem property and include that parcel in the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District. Number three, city agrees to work with British Petroleum Corporation with the assistance of developer to narrow the scope of the existing gas line easement on the property. Number four, city agrees to relocate existing hike trail easement through the property. Number five, developer will be responsible for grading the trail easement area. Number six, the previously approved 10 years of tax increment financing incentives will be increased because of the additional property being acquired by developer. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are in a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution approving the First Amendment to Development Agreement by and between the City of Dubuque and Seiple Warehouse LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone present to discuss this with us? No, seeing anyone virtually? Okay, all right, back to the table then for any discussion. Well, I would just like to say that it's always exciting to see development agreements grow larger as we, from something that we've already approved, so this is wonderful. I want to thank Seiple Warehouse LLC for moving forward with this. All right, we have a motion by Jones, second by Sprank, to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
We'll now move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there's any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to action items on this agenda.
Thank you, Trish. Do we have any public input this evening? Seeing none here, do we have any virtual input?
No virtual input.
Okay. And any emails received? Okay. Going once, going twice. All right, we will move on then to action items, please, Trish.
Next are action items. Action item number one is Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, 2023 Ken Kringle Award Presentation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Russell.
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second.
Got a motion by Russell, second by Jones. Chris, you can take it away. Chris or Taya, who is ever going first?
Um, yeah, I think I'm the spokesperson this evening. Hi, my name's Taya Dement, and I'm the vice chairperson of the City of Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, and I live at 375 Alpine Street. Do you have the presentation? Oh, okay. All right, and then Chris from the city's helping me with our little PowerPoint here. So today starts Preservation Month, and tomorrow, at the 21st Annual Ken Kringle Historic Preservation Awards, we celebrate people saving places. Our award is named after the late Ken Kringle for his dedication to historic preservation through his involvement as a member and past chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission and many other organizations. We celebrate him through the following awards. So our first award is 510 West 11th Street. There we go. And this is the Marion Edwin Albee House, and it was built by 1898. It's a Queen Anne Victorian, and it's an exquisite intact example of its style. Owners Gina Kramer and Juan Nieto purchased the home for their family in 2010 and got to work at restoring and recreating lost features and repairing many deteriorating systems, like the three distinctive porches, wood siding, and windows. The project is a great example of how owning a historic home is never a one-and-done. Our next award goes to 895 Washington. So this is the historic Kurchmer Treadway Company Building, now Kretchmer Lofts, and was built in 1912 as a plumbing manufacturing plant. It's located in the historic Millwork District and has been restored and adaptively reused by Conlon, or, sorry, yeah, by Conlon Construction. Tim Conlon and Matt Mulligan began the process during the pandemic and completed the structure last year. They utilized historic tax credits and over $500,000 in city incentives to help create 48 new housing units. Our next award goes to 1585 Central. After almost 20 years of the first Voices from the Warehouse exhibit, we now have Voices Studios. This new home of the arts organization is the former location of the Henry Wilking Wallpaper and Paint Building. This dynamic space supports artists and engages the community with events, gallery space, and a planned artist-in-residency program. The structure enhances and energizes the revitalization of the Upper Central Avenue Historic District where it resides. Our next award goes to 1699 Iowa Street. This amazing restoration and reuse of the 1885 former German Methodist Episcopal Church was undertaken by the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Dubuque. The church was restored to its former glory as a carpenter Gothic structure with a reconstructed belfry, restored windows and roof, and an updated, accessible, and relevant interior space. A host of organizations, craftspeople, and donors joined the fellowship to make this project possible. The project utilized historic tax credits and $35,000 in city incentives. The next award goes to 1738 Central. And this 1892 Ferdinand A. Nestler Block is a two-part commercial storefront in the Upper Central Avenue National Register Historic District. It has been restored and rehabilitated with eight apartments and two storefronts by Allison and Chris Richard of Carrick Properties LLC. This is part of a larger effort to bring new life back to this neighborhood. Using historic tax credits and $80,000 in city incentives, this is one of the first major projects to bring residents and businesses back to Central Avenue. Our next award goes to 1659 to 1677 Iowa. These are the Jackson Park Row Houses. Built between 1872 and 1889, they were long abandoned and structurally in danger of collapse and threatened with demolition. The City of Dubuque acquired the structure and made it available at a low cost to a developer who could convert it back to quality housing. Tom Kelzer and Gary Carner of GT Development performed a full rehabilitation and are now selling the Jackson Park Row Houses. We just want to thank all of the awardees and the city council for their support of historic preservation in the City of Dubuque, and the public is welcome to join us tomorrow at Voices Studio for the award ceremony starting at 6:00 p.m.
All right, well, thank you very much, Taya and Chris, for the presentation. Do we have any questions or discussion for them? Other than to say congratulations to the award winners, I mean, that's some beautiful work for some very important properties in the City of Dubuque, real, real key parts of our history there, so it was wonderful to see that.
Absolutely, yeah, I agree.
Should be an exciting night for an awards night tomorrow night, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. Okay, motion by Russell, second by Jones, to receive and file. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Action item number two is Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission Recommendation for renaming the former Piattagoras Park to J.C.'s Park.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and discuss along the council.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Sprank. Uh, Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware is submitting the City's Park and Recreation Advisory Commission recommendation to city council to rename the previously-named Piattagoras Park to J.C. Park.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Farber.
Thank you. I do have some remarks I'd like to share, and first and foremost, I would like to thank the commission for taking the time to review the submissions, acknowledging the city council's 2018 policy, which presented guiding principles and procedures, actually, for naming and renaming our parks. I was impressed with the very, very strong community input, and I think, as everybody can agree, the large number of submissions and petitions and articles that were shared pretty much on behalf of this naming opportunity, and I really can't thank them enough for all of their enthusiasm for all of the submitted honorees. Although we are limited to only one selection tonight, which makes our decision very challenging, I encourage those who nominated those outstanding citizens, both past and present, to continue to explore opportunities to recognize these folks and their stellar contributions to the city. So that being said, as we explore this opportunity to rename the park, I think it's important to review the reason behind the original intent, and that Piattagoras Park was really established to name and honor our international sister city, Piattagoras, Russia. And the International Sister City Organization is, I consider, a very important one and is sponsored by cities throughout the world to help foster cultural, social, and economic relationships. relationships among diverse nationalities. Dubuque is fortunate to have two longstanding sister cities right now, Dornburg, Austria, and Hondon, China, and we are always exploring avenues to expand our international relations on behalf of the City of Dubuque. It seems natural to me personally to follow the footsteps of the original intent, continuing to rename the park on behalf of our international relationships, and thus the name International City Park seems appropriate to me and might want to be further explored. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you very much, and so Dubuque's storied history is full of hard-working, community-minded individuals and organizations, and even though my favorite choice wasn't selected, I do appreciate our Park and Rec Commission's efforts to choose just one, based on the criteria supplied to them, so I do intend to support their selection. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I gotta say, I was a little disappointed that the Sister City Committee wasn't invited for comment. I mean, they were, the whole city was, but they weren't specifically invited and probably should have been, and that's just a whoops that could happen to anybody. Heard some fairly strong feelings from some of the members of that committee, and I don't disagree with them, that the things that Ms. Farber said are true, that this park was named after Piata Gores, which I think was our first sister city, predated my council service, but that was important to the City of Dubuque. It was an important concept to have a more global reach, to have global friendships with other cities. Later came Hondon, China, and most recently, Dornburg, Austria, and those sister city relationships are incredibly important to us. I appreciate the work of the commission. It's pretty hard to get from here to here when you're working things. We've got some familiarity with that, with our goal-setting process. We take a couple of hundred good ideas and throw most of them out and end up with a small list that are doable. And I love the work of the J.C.s. They make a tremendous impact in this community. But so does Kiwanis, the Road Race, Toma, Lyons, Optimus, Alex, Shriners, the Basins, Knights of Columbus, and I don't know how many that I couldn't think of when I was putting that little list together. And so I'm disinclined to jump on that bandwagon and say this is the name for this park, especially when we'd be taking away the recognition of the city's attempt at a more global impact. So I would support that the park be named Sister City International Park. Someone suggested it might be Dirk Voetberg International Park, because Dirk was a great proponent of the Sister City concept in his first round of terms of the city council in the 80s and 90s. I'm gonna let Dirk slide out of this one, but had to mention him here tonight, but I would support International Park or Sister City International Park, and of course, I'll support whatever the majority of this council comes up with. In saying all of this, I don't want to take any praise away from the outstanding J.C.'s organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Russell.
I would, first of all, like to say thanks to the commission for doing the hard work that we've asked them to do and to go through the wonderful submissions that so many of our residents took the time to put together, because the requirements that we, that we put together asks the person to really give it some thought before you send this in, and so I know they had a really hard job. And for that reason, I'm going to support their suggestion to us. I think they've done the hard work that we've asked them to do, and I would like to support their decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I can echo everything everyone said. I can, I totally appreciate what the Park and Rec Commission has done. It's not an easy task. It's been odd that there have been people still calling and emailing with name suggestions. They seem to miss the point that that option is no longer an option. But yeah, I just, nothing against the J.C.'s, I just can't, don't agree with the name of J.C.'s Park. I like the idea of the original intent of either International Sister City Park or Sister City International Park. I don't know how to make it sound pleasant and roll off the tongue, but that just seems more, more appropriate for what the purpose of the park has always been, so with that, I pass.
Thank you, Mr. Sprank. Ms. Wethel.
Well, I appreciate all of the comments of my colleagues. I have learned a lot about many members of our community through this process, so I appreciate everyone who's reached out to me with a personal story about an individual who exceptionally gave back to their community or to their country. I really enjoyed being able to learn more about those individuals. That being said, I believe that with all good intentions, that our Park and Rec folks worked so hard on coming to this decision, and so I'm inclined to follow it. I appreciate, however, the idea of keeping the name of Sister City. In this case, I think I will support the Park and Rec recommendation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wethel. I'm gonna be honest here, I didn't expect this to come down to my vote, so. And I'm, I appreciate all the feedback. This has been, this has been very, very helpful. This process, I think, has been really useful to be able to talk about this. You know, one of the things that strikes me is, you know, we've all kind of mentioned the great naming opportunities that people came up with, you know, all the ways that we could really celebrate people who deserve to be celebrated in this community. And I think that the fact that, you know, I think it's, I believe we have 52 parks, Marie, is that correct? We have 52? I only know that number because Randy told it to me earlier this week, otherwise I wouldn't have that right off the top of my head, but there are 52 parks in the City of Dubuque, which is a wonderful amenity that we all have, and I think that there are a lot of opportunities for naming, you know, because we can only choose one here for this one place, and there are a lot of opportunities for naming all these, all these different parks and places and important spots throughout our city. Kind of fits right in with the preservation discussion, too, you know, all the ways that we can celebrate each other and the history that we bring to this. I really am, I've been torn on this, you know, all weekend long as I thought about it, and actually, since we first had this discussion. And the challenges that I see are that, you know, the reason we pulled the original name from this park, I think, was, it was not done easily. That was not an easy decision for us to make, to say that we no longer want to have a connection to an entire city in the country of Russia based on what has happened in the Russian-Ukraine war. But that was also after we had already reached out to the city, and the response we received was not a welcome one in trying to maintain that connection. It does speak to the challenges of maintaining an international connection as a local, as a city and as a local government these days. There are, there are real global challenges that we face with all of this, and I think that that's part of this discussion. And it's why I'm originally inclined to continue on the route of keeping this related to sister cities in some way. And, you know, I love the name J.C.'s Park, I really do. I think it fits with the trail. I love the fact that the J.C.'s have served so much to our community and brought so much to us. You know, to have, to throw a community party like the Fourth of July Party that we have every single year is a really important contribution, along with everything else that the J.C.'s do. And that's also to speak to the contribution of the Park and Rec Commission. This was a difficult discussion that they had. It was a difficult conversation from a community standpoint. I think, Mr. Jones, you're always away with words, you pointed it out again. I mean, the way that we have to go through with whittling a list down is the same thing that they had to go through with this, and I really do hate to go against that particular choice that they have made, but I do think it's important that we maintain some sort of connection for the original intent of this park. I have to agree with my council colleagues on that particular piece. I would love it if it's named after a city, but I think we've also recognized the challenges with that. You know, there are, there are global forces that we can't control, but one of the things we can do as a city is make it, make a statement that our connection to the international community and to the rest of this earth that we live on is an important one, and I think that we, I think that we have an opportunity here to keep that connection with the original intent of what this park was, and maybe even improve upon it. You know, it was nice, it's nice to have a sign that points to your sister cities, but at that park, there's not that much else that we can, that we can state aside from some of the, there is a plaque there that discusses our sister city relationships, but I would like to celebrate that a little bit more. The name, we've got an international park, but the Sister City International Park, I think, is an important addition to that, because the Sister City name is the one that I think is important in this. So I'm inclined to agree with my three other council members who want to move in that direction. But, you know, I don't want to make that the end of the discussion, I think, because we're moving in an opposite direction of what a commission has said, and I think it's important that we, we open it back up to discussion here. If anybody else has any further comments, I don't want to just close this off at this point, so feel free to jump back in if you have any other comments to say at this point. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your comments, and I do, you mentioned a plus as an international spot, and I do want to point out that the J.C. group is an international group, J.C. International. I originally thought that maybe it should be J.C.'s Park, so I talked to, I called to the board, the chamber, I mean, the J.C. Chamber Chair, pardon me, the Chair, and talked to the president, and it's J.C.I., J.C., so J.C. International. So we do maintain that connection. Again, there's a lot, the thing is, I wish we would have perhaps given them that criteria before they went through all this, that, you know, keeping it as originally intended, and that park has been around for a little bit, just the area, not as a park, but again, I do think since we furnished the criteria, it would be kind of too bad if we said that, well, that's the criteria, but now we're gonna change it. So I do hope that, I know four people spoke against it, it wouldn't be their first choice, but maybe upon when we, when we're taking a vote, I'm hoping that some people will reconsider that, and because they seem flexible, again, I didn't get my first choice, but I agree that this is, this is a worthy group who have an international connection, and I intend to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
So, and I very much appreciate your comments, and I think that being local is also being global, and I do believe, you know, and coming from a background where I lived and worked overseas for many years, and I've come back to the United States, actually came back to Dubuque post, that experience is that my shoulders have broadened so much, and I have grown so much and learned so much and appreciated so much about living in another culture and letting us experience other cultures as well here on the Dubuque, within the Dubuque City. And I'm also finding that the reputation of Dubuque is getting stronger and more broad as I have conversations with those that are both international and domestic, and I just think that this is just extremely important to, to keep broadening and keep sharing that experience and having those opportunities for all generations here in the city, and I think the fact that we can continue to have some kind of an international stepping stone and learning opportunity for folks, I think is just really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell.
I would like to echo Mr. Resnick's comments. I feel that if that were our intent with the naming of the park, we really could have made that clear in the process when we were asking for submissions. Again, I support what the commission has recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wethel.
Just to elaborate a little further on my thoughts and process and reviewing all of these very worthy naming rights, the thing that kept coming to mind for me as I thought about J.C. Park, well, a couple of things, but one is that it's not one person. It's a collective organization, decades of people in our community who have grown up giving back, and I've been witness to that since I've come back to Dubuque in a really powerful way, and the J.C.'s fireworks experience is one that we know not only speaks to our own community, but to over 100,000 people every year, which I think is a very notable reason for us to consider as well, but I appreciate everybody's input, and I can see where they're coming from, but I would continue to support the idea of the Parks and Rec recommendation.
We remain fairly divided. This is a great discussion. I sincerely appreciate it. Mr. Resnick has floated a very interesting idea to me, the idea of, you know, J.C. being an international organization, but the name of J.C. International Park has an interesting ring to it that would allow us to maybe have a bit of a compromise here, to maintain a direct sister city connection, an international connection, but also, and keep the, I guess I could, I'm trying to find the words here, but keep the tenor and the purpose and the intent of the park still intact while also celebrating the trail and the, that it's connected to and the J.C.'s organization, and then obviously moving forward with the recommendation from our hard-working commission here. So I'm curious about that idea, if anybody has, I mean, I'm gonna guess that the folks that are already on the J.C. Park boat are gonna stay there, so I'm just curious if anybody else has any other thoughts about that, or if we're sticking with our original place, which is fair. Well, let me ask this, then. Would those of you that are already voting for J.C. Park, would you consider J.C. International Park as an additional, as an addition to that name?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Resnick, it was your idea, so I'm guessing.
Well, that wasn't my specific idea.
Well, I'm just, okay, yeah, sorry to put words in your mouth, then.
Okay, then, but it is an international organization. The thing is, you don't give up on your original, if this were a negotiation, until somebody has moved towards you a little bit, and I don't feel that anybody, the people who would like to change it radically have not said anything like, oh, I could support that. So I guess I'm waiting to hear from...
I guess what I would say is, I'm leaning towards supporting that, and it appears that I'm the deciding vote here, so I'm kind of leaning in your direction, if that's something that...
I just wanted to hear that specifically, and since I have the floor, yes, I think that's a great idea. Thanks.
I believe it was originally Mr. Resnick's idea.
So the argumentations continues here.
Yes.
So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the idea that the word "international" would be in there, but that kind of is more toward a group versus cities, other nations, other relationships that can be represented. I also think that based upon the fact we have maybe 52 other parks within the city, that there might be other naming opportunities for J.C.'s and some of these other Dubuques that were honored in the submissions for basically their donations and basically all that they have given to our city. And so I would think that because the original intent for this piece of the park and recreation space was for the international cities and for all that that represents culturally, economically, and socially, again, for every one of all ages here in Dubuque, I would recommend that we look for another naming opportunity for the J.C.'s organization with or without the international, depending upon perspective here, but that is, I think it's important to keep the history here and the setup here, because I know that there will be other naming opportunities, but this is kind of unique in what was established many, many years ago. I understand that this was done, so I'm just trying to keep consistent with history here for the heritage of Dubuque. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I don't think that J.C. International Park does anything to advance the concept of sister cities, and in fact, if you try and blend it too much, it starts to suggest that the J.C.'s did the sister city thing, which they didn't, and as much as I admire the work of the J.C.'s, this isn't it, and as much as I admire the work of the Park and Rec Commission, I'm basically coming from some new information from contacts made by members of the Sister City Committee who said, hey, wait a minute, we weren't at the table. This, you're taking something away from the community that we think is important, and I agree with them. I agree with them.
It's interesting to me how difficult this is for the naming of a park. You know, we take things very seriously as a council, and I appreciate that, but it's interesting to me that, you know, this is, this is, all the passion of our community sort of poured into this issue, and I really do appreciate that it is, it's been a challenging decision. And I've never been in this situation on this particular council where I'm literally still torn as we sit here and make a vote, so whatever I decide to vote in the next few minutes, you're going to watch it happen. Because I really, these arguments are very compelling. I mean, the fact that we have a commission that has done hard work, we gave them parameters, and they followed them very carefully, to the point where they removed some names from the list that really, they didn't fit the criteria that we handed to them, and they followed it very closely, and I appreciate the work that they did. I understand that, Mr. Jones, your point, you know, that this is, by sticking with the JC's name, we don't, we don't necessarily celebrate sister cities. I struggle a bit with the, I'm going to be honest here, and I don't mean this disrespectfully to anyone involved, but I struggle a bit with the sentiment that somebody wasn't invited to the table. This was a process that rolled out over months, and I think it was important that if somebody had input, they needed to give it at the certain time that it was there. And what I would, what I would hope is that we can, that we can find some ways to make sure that, you know, the discussion about sister cities issues, I think, is an important one. And I think that it's important that the Sister City Commission or Committee, you know, really get, get a chance to have this input, but they also, I think everybody had a chance to provide their input, and I think that's, that's one of the challenges I have here.
They did provide some input.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but they didn't have, and I do believe that they met with the commission as well.
Yeah, okay, all right. So here's, here's where, here's where I'm going to land. You know, I think the fact that, I think the fact that this, this park was originally intended to celebrate our sister city relationships is a really important fact. I get that it wasn't a criteria that we specifically pointed out in discussing this, but I do think that our connection with our sister cities and this international connection that we have with the rest of the world is an important one. And I hate to back away from the recommendation of the commission because they really did very hard work, but I really do think that the name of Sister City International Park is an important connection to maintain at this particular space in our community. So I'm inclined at this point to agree with my colleagues that are, that are on that particular track. We've had two different names. Is Sister City International Park the name that I see the four of us that plan to vote in this direction? Okay. Then, a quick point of order here, Krena, this is a, you know, receive and file, and then refer to the council. Is this just a decision we make, and that's that, or how does this work?
There would be a motion, and you would go through the vote.
Okay, so I'd need to entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Farber.
I move that we rename Patagoras Park to Sister City International Park.
Second.
So I have a motion by Farber and a second by Jones. I believe we've all had a chance to speak our piece. Okay. Then Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones? Rousseau?
No.
Resnick?
No.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
No.
Sprank?
Aye.
That motion passes four to three, and thank you for a great discussion.
Action item number three is Comiskey Park Phase One Redevelopment Project, painting of basketball court and splash pad schedule change.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Sprank, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Leisure Services Manager Marie Ware, sharing information related to the Comiskey Park Phase One Redevelopment Project, specifically the painting of the basketball court and splash pad that causes a schedule change. Well, there's no presentation, Marie is here and available to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I'm, nothing against staff, I know they've been diligently working on this project. I really like this color scheme, in honesty, because it's just, it's a lot of bright, vibrant colors, and so I am really excited that citizens are going to have one more little aspect of this park that are just going to make it that much more fun, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rousseau?
Question, I think this would be for, probably for Marie. Marie, it looked like this change made a slight increase, but in the long run, it looks like it's a decrease in maintenance costs. Is that correct?
Good evening. Marie Ware, Leisure Services Manager. That's correct. So it's a slight increase right now, but what it's gaining us is years of life on that paint, of which each time we would have to do that every two to three years, it pays for itself in the, you know, first couple, three years. So that's why when we started to go down this path and saw that, that's a huge deal. That's a big savings for the city and departmentally over the years.
Great. It just seems like a win-win.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Wethel?
I am still impressed with the things I am learning about paint and cement and, but truly, thank you for your team for exploring all of these options that in the end will be more valuable and benefit the taxpayer more when it comes to long-term cost. And I echo Councilman Sprank's excitement about just the beauty of what it will be. It was exciting to see the renderings, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Well, I'll just echo and say that my initial disappointment was very quickly replaced by excitement when I did look through the plans and be able to see what this is going to look like. This is going to be such a great addition, not just to the neighborhood and to the north end neighborhood, but to the entire city. I think it's going to, I think people are going to rediscover Comiskey Park and discover Comiskey Park for the first time. So I'm really excited that this is moving forward, and thank you for finding this change, and thank you to you and staff for finding this and coming up with an even better way to get this done, even if it means a little bit more of a wait, so. We have a motion by Sprank and a second by Farber to receive and file. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
On the park renaming item, can we just go back for one second?
Absolutely.
On the motion that was made by Councilmember Farber and seconded by Councilmember Jones, it was to rename the park, does anyone mind if from a procedural standpoint, we adjust that to be receive and file and rename the park as that was included in the original action?
Yes.
And essentially, we just need the motioner and the seconder to agree to that, and then everyone to confirm that their votes would remain the same.
Mr. Mayor, as amended.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, Ms. Farber.
Thank you.
Jones, would anyone be changing their vote based on this item? Anybody really not want to receive and file this at this point? Okay.
Thank you. We just wanted to clean that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving forward then.
Action item number four is Sustainable Dubuque Grant Recommendations.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the many resolutions.
Second by Wethel.
A motion by Resnick and a second by Wethel. Mike, please.
City Manager Mike Van Milligan, Sustainable Community Coordinator Gina Bell is recommending City Council approval of the Resilient Community Advisory Commission recommendations for the following projects for funding from the Sustainable Dubuque Community Grant Program Round 27 at a total funding amount of $12,650. Following applications are recommended for funding centrally rooted for the Launch of Exploration Labs Project, $2,000. Convivium Urban Farmstead for the Garden Supplies and Support Project for $1,750. Four Mounds Foundation for the Land Stewardship Planning for Endangered Species Project, $1,750. Nova Elite Youth Basketball for Player Scholarships Project, $1,350. St. Mark Youth Enrichment for the Hero Summer Camp Project, $1,815. Tri-State Christian School for the New Garden for New School Project, $2,225. Valentine Park Community Garden for the Fence Replacement and Expansion Project, $1,760. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I have to ask again about the Tri-State Christian School, which is not located in the city of Dubuque. I don't know if this garden is going to be located in the city of Dubuque, and I don't think it's an investment that the city of Dubuque taxpayers should make, since it's outside the corporate limits.
So, first of all, Gina Bell is on virtually, but I'll answer because she wrote it in her memo here. She says, also of note, one applicant, Tri-State Christian School, falls outside of city limits. In a prior grant cycle, they applied for and were awarded a grant on the basis that they serve primarily city of Dubuque residents, 62% of their clients. While the guidelines state grantees must fall within city limits, prior grants have been considered. Another past example of an award granted to an entity outside the city but serving Dubuque residents is Northeast Iowa Community College. So that's the response to the, that point.
I guess I would argue that Northeast Iowa Community College has two buildings in downtown Dubuque, and they certainly do have a Dubuque presence, and I have no, no issue with their mission or what they're trying to do, but this is the City of Dubuque City Council. I don't think our policy reaches beyond their corporate city limits, especially when we're spending money.
Any further, thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
I would like to ask our city attorney if her, what her opinion is about that, and the source of the money, is it Dubuque taxpayer-funded? Is this general, from the general fund? Those are my questions. Or is it, are we simply taking federal or state money and allocating it as, as best we can?
So maybe we, second question first, maybe, where the source of the funds would be a good answer first, maybe?
So the source of the funds is the City of Dubuque General Fund.
Thank you. And then, Krena, you can address the first part, please.
Yes, so...
We'll catch up if you need.
I think I'm, I think I'm tracking. The entity is outside of city limits. The attendees at the school are substantially, I don't know if we had data on that, substantially city residents.
They're 62% city of Dubuque residents.
So for purposes of, for example, the state code and the auditor or things like that, I don't think we would be running afoul of any state code by approving that, because what they're looking at is that the expenditures comply with the public purpose provisions of the state code. So I don't think you would be running afoul of that, so it essentially comes down to a policy decision.
Thank you, Krena. Mr. Resnick, do you have any?
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Sprank?
I think we're going to need to revise that policy for next year. The entity would, should be up in the city limits of Dubuque, so...
That's what the policy currently says.
Yeah, I guess I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Jones on this. I mean, the policy currently states that we don't provide this funding for entities outside of the city of Dubuque, and I don't want to fault anybody on this. You know, I think, I very much, I thank you for Tri-State Christian School for being a part of our community and putting in this new garden for the school or wanting to do this. That's a great purpose. But, you know, this is, we have a specific fund that specifically funds things, organizations and people within the city of Dubuque, and I'm inclined to hold true to that policy and, you know, it, we may have a bit of a precedent here that it says we've, well, we do have a precedent that says we've done this before, but I'd, I'd like the precedent going forward to say that we're going to fund city of Dubuque entities if we're going to do this. So I think that the policy is clear, and I think that this council has an opportunity to stick with it by amending this and removing this, the Tri-State Christian School project from this, for no other reason than the fact that they fall outside of the city of Dubuque limits. Even though they're very close, they do fall outside of the city of Dubuque limits.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I guess I'd say that errors are not precedent, errors are errors.
Sure. It's a fair point.
May I ask?
Yep, Ms. Wethel.
As far as if this money is then not allotted to this group for this application, would that money go back into the general fund, Mr. Van Milligan?
Well, that's not what I would suggest would happen, and I don't think that's what would happen. All the applicants, the city applicants, weren't fully funded, so I would suggest to go back to the commission for reallocation, and maybe they would provide, recommend to provide it to some of these others that already applied, or maybe they'd say, well, we're going to do another application round. I don't, I don't know which, but I guess I would suggest that the money stay in its original purpose, and then however the commission recommends to you it gets allocated, then you could decide.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you had the original comment. Do you care to make a motion on this?
We've got a motion on the table, so I guess I would like to offer an amendment to the motion to disqualify the Tri-State Christian School grant.
Okay. So the original motioner is Mr. Resnick.
Right, so you could do this as an amendment to that, there could be a vote on that, and then you could go back to the original as amended.
Okay. So that you just offered that a...
The amendment is to disqualify the Tri-State Christian School.
Second to the amendment.
Okay. Got a motion by Jones, second by Farber to amend this to disqualify the Tri-State Christian School. Okay, so we need to vote on that particular amendment? Okay, so motion by Jones, second by Farber. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Resnick?
No.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
That motion passes six to one on the amendment, so the...
So we go, we would go back to the original, so it was moved by Resnick and seconded by Wethel, and if those parties agree, then it would be receive and file, adopt resolution as amended.
Okay. So, Mr. Resnick, can I come back to you?
I'm not going to agree to that, so someone else can make the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I don't believe that the original mover's agreement is necessary under Robert's rules or under statute.
I'm sorry.
I think the motion's been amended whether the original mover agrees with it or not under the rules.
You're right. You're right, so it would just be a vote.
The vote is on the motion as amended, because the motion's been amended.
The vote would be on the motion as amended. You're correct.
Regardless of who motioned in the beginning.
Yes.
Based on Robert's rules, the motion as amended is what we are currently voting on.
We did a formal vote.
We do a less formal process a lot of the time where the motioner and the seconder change the motion, and no disrespect to David.
Thank you.
He appears to feel none, so. So is everyone clear on this before we, before I call for a vote? I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on what, where we're, what we're voting on. Okay. Okay. Then we have a motion and a second on this, and then we are voting on it as amended. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Rousseau?
Aye.
Resnick?
No.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Action item number five is agreement with CC-15 LLC, right-of-way land transfer at the intersection of...
Bee's.
Bee's Drive, Silvania Drive, and Century Drive.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousseau.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
A motion by Rousseau and a second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan, City Engineer Gus Ahoyas is recommending City Council adopt a resolution approving the agreement with property owner Joel Callahan, CC-15 LLC, for certain right-of-way and land transfers at the intersection of Bee's Drive, Sylvan Drive, and Century Drive for reconstruction, which will include roadway improvements, sidewalk installation, and utility improvements. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request Mayor and City Council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none. Got a motion by Rousseau and a second by Sprank to receive and file and adopt the Got a motion by Russell and a second by Sprank to receive and file and adopt this resolution. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Action item number six is National Endowment of the Arts, Local Arts Agency, American Rescue Plan Creative Empowerment Subgrant Funding Recommendation for Round One.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Earned approval.
Second.
Motion is to receive and file and approve by Jones, second by Russell. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council concurrence with the Arts and Cultural Affairs Advisory Commission's recommendation to fund the National Endowment for the Arts, American Rescue Plan Act Creative Empowerment Round One subgrant applications at the award levels in the chart below. Thus, the Arts Commission's Creative Empowerment Subgrant Funding Recommendation for Round One is as follows. Andoneo Giannacoros for Grid 100 Mini Paintings, $2,000. Alia Harian for Naomi Publication, $2,000. Brianna Thompson for Liberation for Arts Documentary for $1,994. Breon Bowman for Album of Musics, $2,000. Katherine Goodman, Fading Elegance, a Tribute to Good Grammar, Style, Manners and Jazz à la cabaret, $2,000. Dale Campbell, Black Lives on the Upper Mississippi, $2,000. Aaron Kono, Portraits of Service, Dubuque's Founding Females, $1,937. Gail Chavanel, Black History is America History, a Sculpture Design Project, $1,950. Luke Tyler, Music for All Concert Series, $2,000. Michelle Shalook, Emergence of Spirit, Souls of Sorrow, $2,000. Total funds to be awarded, $19,881. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion? These look like exciting projects. I'm excited to see them get off the ground, so I'm happy to be able to provide a little kickstart for them. All right. Motion by Jones, second by Russell, to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Action item number seven is Proposed Fourteenth Amendment to Master Colocation and Shared Services Agreement between the City of Dubuque and Amon Communications LLC.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Farber?
I move we receive and file and approve the resolution.
Second.
So there's no resolution, actually, Ms. Farber?
Just, and approve.
So your motion is to receive and file and approve?
And approve.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, still second?
I tried that a minute ago. It didn't work for me.
Krena keeps catching us on things like this. I saw her start talking. All right, Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Dave Ness, Information Services Manager Chris Coleman and Sustainable Innovation Consultant David Lyons are recommending city council approval of a Fourteenth Amendment to the Master Colocation and Shared Services Agreement between the City of Dubuque and Amon Communications LLC. In 2016, the City of Dubuque undertook its Broadband Acceleration Initiative. The initiative focuses on public-private collaborations and includes a comprehensive strategy to reduce the cost and time required for broadband expansions in Dubuque. One effort within that strategy is the use of master agreements where an overall legal, structural and financial relationship is established between the city and broadband providers and approved by the city council. Project statements and amendments carried out pursuant to that master agreement can then be quickly considered and approved. In 2017, the City of Dubuque and Amon entered into a master colocation and shared services agreement to accelerate the deployment of new broadband capacity in Dubuque. Multiple subsequent amendments have followed. The collaborations have gone well and all anticipated value to the city is being received. As Amon accelerates its fiber to the home buildout in Dubuque, Amon is able to reduce cost and time for deployment by leveraging existing city conduit, while the city is able to leverage Amon's new builds to expand its network of new multi-duck conduit and broadband services. The attached amendment covers a series of such collaborations ranging from Amon crossing a single street using existing city conduit to Amon and city partnering to reduce costs for a major infrastructure buildout along South Grandview Avenue and Mount Carmel, to the city allowing Amon to access city conduit along the B branch to provide free public Wi-Fi. The estimated difference between the cost of the new construction and services to the city and conduit value to Amon is $61,742, which the city will receive in license payments and/or services. There is a positive budgetary impact to the approval of the proposed amendment, not only in the form of license payments, but in significantly reduced costs for expanding the city broadband network via cost collaboration with Amon. This amendment supports Dubuque's Broadband Acceleration Initiative, protects and enhances existing city right-of-way and reduces the cost to city of providing a state-of-the-art fiber optic lighting and public safety camera infrastructure in multiple areas of the city. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
Just a footnote, last week, Amon added City Channel to their lineup for their Dubuque customers that subscribe to the television service, so thank them for that.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other discussion, the motion is to receive and file and approve. Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Action item number eight is Cancel May 15, 2023 Sustainable Dubuque Work Session.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move that the work session previously scheduled for May 15 be canceled and that we receive and file.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Jones, second by Russell. No any discussion on that one? Okay. Any questions or anything? All right. Then Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Action item number nine is Flock Safety Automated License Plate Reader Presentation. Time change for May 15, 2023 Work Session.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move the time change, I move that we receive and file and change the time of the planned work session to 5:45 PM on May 15.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Should work for everybody since we previously had something scheduled, so Trish, would you call the roll, please?
Jones?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Action item number 10 is Work Session Request: Speed Study Data Related to Automated Speed Enforcement Recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and schedule a work session for Tuesday, June 20 at 5:30 PM.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell and a second by Sprank. Work for everybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
So, June 20, so that's, it'll be on a Tuesday, and that's because Juneteenth, we're taking it.
Juneteenth, right.